They're kind of like me now. I'm getting plump. I'm getting plump and my wife put me out to pasture, so.
You see, how are you feeling these days? How's your health?
Yeah, because.
I'll mute. I'll talk to you later. I'm OK with that.
The ring is off. That's going to be good. Seven o'clock, by my.
Hi, John. Hi, John.
All right.
They're only right.
You ready? Ooh. Broke my little.
Call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the call.
Dear Supervisor, please be advised that the Trempeau County Board of Supervisors will meet at 7:00 PM on July 18th, 2022, in the county boardroom. All county board members' claims are due in the county clerk's office by noon on July 8th, 2022, so they can be prepared for audit committee approval. Sincerely, Paul Severson, County Clerk.
Wrong call.
Bridget Turner. Stacy Klein. Richard Saisha. Lori Severson. Andy Todd. Heather Fritsch. Kevin Adams. Dick Miller. David Orsh. John Austin.
Present.
Riley Foltz.
Here.
Robert Becker.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Dan Schreiner. Kellen Nelson. David Larson. Jeannie Nutter. Ron Johnson. Seventeen and zero.
Hope a meeting along requirements been met with notification posting. We have a 13 item agenda. I would like to move the closed session down to after item 10, so the TV studio can just close down for the night when we go to closed session. So I need a motion for that effect. Motion made. Motion made by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Posed?
You got to wait for him.
Sorry about that. He said aye. He said aye, so it's a hundred percent. Anyway. Minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Turner, second by Ms. Nutter. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Must have not carried.
Time I didn't hear.
OK. Appearance test. Samuel's group. We got Kurt Burner here from Samuel's group.
Evening, everyone. Good to see you tonight. I was told you have a full agenda and I was given three minutes, so. No, I don't have much to provide to you other than just good news. Continue to have great safety performance out there. We're without a lost time accidents since the start of the job, so I thank all the trades people, all of the individuals involved in audits and those sorts of things, so they're moving along well. What you're going to see over the course of the next couple of months is a lot of precast that's going to be going into place, so we've got some columns and we've got some plank and steel girders are going to be going up, so you'll start seeing that structure come together. All the infrastructure of the Bering CMU has been really focused towards these dates because we had some benchmarks to hit with the precast delivery and we've been able to attain them. So what you'll see over the course of the month of July and August, block will still continue to go up, all the infrastructure will be going on, but you're going to start to see some precast panels going over the course of the next few weeks. So all in all, jobs going very, very well, still on schedule. We do have some construction bulletins that we've brought to the property committee this month, and that's why the funding or the contingency log is on your agenda today for the resolution. I will stick around for that to answer any questions that any of you may have, but are there any questions for me before I close my presentation?
Any questions? Don't look like it.
OK, thank you.
It's. Ah, you didn't make us three minutes. So you gave us extra time to the Chippewa Valley Technical College. I had the pleasure of meeting Dr. Garcia earlier this year, and she's here to present an update on the Chippewa Valley Technical College.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for allowing me to spend some time with you this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I didn't come alone. I came with a native, Angela Ekman, who is from this area. She was able to tell me along the way about the history here and her family, how much she loves this community, and so I would not have dared come here without Angela as my guide. And I'm new to Wisconsin and I'm new to the college. I moved from Fort Lauderdale, Florida to Wisconsin last summer. I'll give you a minute. You have a lot of. Yes, you have a lot of that too, but also a lot of fans in the area. And so when my family and I were looking to relocate our family, the college came up, the region came up, and my son, who was adamant about not moving from Florida, took one look at Wisconsin and said, I want to live here. And I'll have to tell you that he was very upset when the snow melted. So I told him that if there's anything that I can guarantee is it'll be back, right? So we are happy here and it's been an amazing first year, not only for me personally and my new home state, but also for the college. The college is a wonderful place to be, and that is not by any means short of the support that the community has given it. So this county and our 11-county region has been incredibly supportive, and you showed that support through the referendum projects. Those projects are coming to fruition. We're still working on them, but we have a brand-new transportation center, 150,000 square feet, which will be a new transportation hub for the region. The entire region will benefit from the programs and for what that'll mean to the area, but also a new and improved emergency services center. We've doubled the square footage there as well to provide police training for the entire region and simulation. And for that snow, we'll be able to have indoor police chases and a number of things that we couldn't do outside. We'll be able to do those things indoor as well as a new rifle place to practice range. And so the referendum has really given us an opportunity to grow. I asked the current CFO, what would have happened if we hadn't built energy back in 1997, which was the last referendum, and he said we would be a quarter of our size. And so that just means that this impetus is going to help us grow and continue to improve the region, which is really what we want. So that has been a great blessing, and I'm very, very thankful, even though I wasn't here for the passing of the referendum, I'm very thankful to all of you who supported it in the community and will maximize the benefit of these spaces. We've also gotten some attention at the state level. The governor awarded us an innovation grant, $10 million, to benefit manufacturing, and a big part of that is the Osseo School District and the employers of the region. We will be able to bring a lot of the programs that we have in Eau Claire on wheels and bring them out to Osseo, which is really important to me. I don't necessarily want students to come to a particular location. We want to serve them where they are and serve the employers where they are, but not all of the grants allow us to move furniture and actually have infrastructure. They're usually for personnel costs, so this is a very important grant that allows us to do that. So you will see direct benefits here in Trempeau County based on that, so we're very, very excited for that. And then finally, we've done a lot this year, but I know, do I have three minutes as well? Because I think I'm kind of going on five or 10 here, but the last piece of this is really providing the opportunity for all of our students to benefit from higher learning. And sometimes that doesn't mean that they go directly into the workforce. Sometimes they have expressed a want to go into the four-year university system and they use us as the front door, which is wonderful. And so they come to us already knowing they're going to transfer. And so prior to this year, we really didn't have a very good transfer system. If you were a STEM major, we had an associate of science, no problem, but if you wanted to be a teacher, or you wanted to go into the arts, or you wanted to go into accounting, that was a little bit more difficult. And so you ended up with more science and math than you needed. So I worked with the three regional universities in our region, Stout, River Falls, and Eau Claire, and we are now going to offer the associate of arts transfer. And that, I think last time we had another degree was 1972, so it's been a little while. We have a lot of new programs, but not a new degree, so that's very, very exciting. And that will allow our students to go in as juniors. So they do the first two years with us and they go right into the four-year with their associates, and you can do that online. You don't have to come physically to the building or one of our campuses. So that is a wonderful and amazing new offering that we can serve to the community. Our fastest-growing population of students are high school students. A lot of them are taking college credit while they're in high school, which is amazing. They can either go right into the workforce as they graduate, or they can go on. This saves the families the entire first two years economically of that degree. So we're able to take that cost on along with the school districts, so the families do not have to pay for those first two years. So think about that and what that means to all the families. So if you have nephews and nieces and neighbors who would benefit from an early start to college, have them think of CBTC. We're here to help them right where they are. So we're not waiting for students to come to us. We're going to go to you, and if you're looking to get your GED, if you're looking to go into the workforce, into any type of workforce programs, or you want to transfer, we have something for everyone at an affordable and reach. So we're very excited about those things, and that's been year one. So year two will also bring exciting things, we hope, but the important work that we do, we can't do it alone. We need each other. We're all interdependent, and the graduates of the region turn around and serve us, so we're very cognizant of that. Today, we're there to serve, but then we put them out into the community and they come back as our teachers, our firemen, our nurses, our surgical techs. They serve us, so we're really, really honored to be able to help folks reach their dreams and then strengthen our communities. And that is my report. Think I made it under 10 minutes, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Yes, sir?
I do like the part of the two-year degree because going to like a tech college the first two years, especially a lot of our students coming from the rural area, a lot of us aren't exactly rich, so that's going to save the students and their family lots of money, and they'll be in less debt when they leave college. So like, especially being from the rural area, that really speaks knowledge. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate being here.
Item C, District Attorney Saisha.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. It's my first time in front of the new board, and so I'm seeing a lot of new faces, some familiar faces. It's great to be here. I'll try to be brief. I'll follow Kurt's very efficient lead. I'm handing around an annual case summary, the details, the Trempeau County District Attorney's Office criminal case filings going back roughly 10 years. The.
Thank you.
The. The document that's going around details only criminal case filings for Trempeau County, but it breaks it down into criminal felonies, misdemeanors, criminal traffic offenses. So that's a big part of what the Trempeau County DA's office does. But I wanted to give you guys kind of a brief introduction for some of you who might not be familiar with the District Attorney's Office, so what we do beyond just criminal filings in the county. Obviously, the prosecution of all criminal matters in Trempeau County is a big part of the job. We handle all criminal felonies, misdemeanors, criminal traffic offenses. In addition to that, we handle all of these citations that are issued by game wardens operating in the county. We handle all of the Wisconsin State Patrol citations and citations issued by the Trempeau County Sheriff's Office. Looking to that 2021 total number, it's 646 criminal cases. That's a huge number of cases. It was a record number for as many years as we have on file, and I should note that those 646 cases are handled by two prosecutors, me and my ADA Mike Diaz. So that's 646 criminal cases plus roughly 300 contested forfeiture matters, which include things like OWI first, speeding, truancy, things of that nature. We have roughly 1,000 cases in 2021 handled by two prosecutors. So to say that we're busy, I think, is a bit of an understatement. Just so you guys are aware, my office is comprised of just a handful of people. Me as a district attorney, I handle a full caseload. My assistant, Mike Diaz, also handles a very full caseload. In addition to the two prosecutors, we have two paralegals, Lainey Nelson-Soon and Amanda Daffinson. We have one full-time victim-witness coordinator, Robin Leonard, and we now have a full-time diversion coordinator, Wayne Apichka. So it's just a kind of a skeleton crew, but we're doing a tremendous amount of work. We're very busy, whether we like it or not, and we're doing really important work for the county. If any of you would like to see what we do firsthand, or if any of you would like to discuss concerns that you have related to criminal matters in the county, criminal trends in the county, I would sincerely invite you to stop into my office or give my office a call and coordinate a time to come in and talk. It's an offer that I've made a few times. Not a whole lot of people take me up on it, but I really would encourage you to do so. There's, I could talk all evening about what's going on in the county, trends that we're seeing, and some ideas that we've been brought to bear to kind of stem the growing trends that we've seen here. Just to touch briefly on what some of those trends are, methamphetamine continues to be a major problem in Trempeau County. A huge driving factor for this increase in case numbers from 2014 forward is the rise of methamphetamine. I would say that probably at least 70% of our criminal felony filings in Trempeau County have a methamphetamine-related nexus, whether that's possession, distribution, or a person abusing methamphetamine and then engaging in some other type of criminal activity, whether that be a property crime, burglary, for example, or even violent and assaultive crimes. Methamphetamine is fueling all types of criminality in Trempeau County, and it's really a scourge on our county. There's no simple answer for how to most effectively address this, but we're trying to do what we can and trying to bring to bear some relatively innovative approaches that I think are having some positive effect. Another trend that we're seeing is a rise in juvenile delinquency filings. It's really unfortunate, but for one reason or another, there's been a rise in delinquency and truancy-related filings. So GIPS cases, which are juvenile need protection services cases and delinquencies, have risen markedly in the last handful of years. And I know there are a number of initiatives through DHS that are kind of designed to intervene early, which is a good thing, and we're doing our part to try to address that growing concern as well. Just so you all are aware, in addition to the criminal stuff, forfeitures, and juvenile delinquencies, the Trempeau County District Attorney's Office also handles all children in need of protection and services cases and juveniles in need of protection and services cases. Not every county works that way. I think the majority, roughly a little over half of Wisconsin counties have the DA's office handle those cases. Other counties have the corporation council's office or outside council handle them. The District Attorney's Office handles those cases at no additional cost to Trempeau County. We do it because I think it has a positive effect for the people that we work with. I think that our office having knowledge and be able to coordinate synergistically with social workers in addition to members of law enforcement to create good outcomes for parents and children at risk is a good thing. So we do that at no additional cost to the county. You know, this has been an issue at various points in the past, but I believe strongly in us handling those cases because I think it does the most good for parents in need and children in need in this county. So just to kind of give you guys an idea of all the work we're doing, there's criminal, there's forfeiture, there's also civil in the form of GIPS and CHIPS. So we're doing a lot. We're busy, but please, if you guys have time, stop up, say hello. I'd love to speak with you, love to kind of hear your thoughts. If you guys have ideas for ways that we can be doing things better, I'm open to hearing them. If you guys just kind of want to get the lay of the land as to what's going on criminally in Trempeau County, happy to have those conversations too. So again, thank you so much for your time. Please stay in touch. Yes, Jeannie?
So these statistics don't include any of the juvenile cases or the CHIPS or GIPS?
They do not. These are criminal filings only. Just to give you kind of a brief indication of delinquency trends, in 2021, we had 43 delinquency filings. Compare that to 27 in 2020, 33 in 2019, 13 in 2018, 12 in 2017, and 14 in 2016. So that's a massive jump, and I think that 43 cases in 2021 is probably informed by a lot of kids being out of school, kind of having more time for idle hands and less oversight in school, and so they run the community and, you know, coming on law enforcement's radar. I don't think we're going to match that number this year, which is a good thing, but the numbers are still high relative to, you know, that 2018, 2017 number. So it's still a concern, but we're not going to be at 2021 numbers in 2022.
OK. Well, I hope to stop in and talk to you about, because of my background in social work, I'm working with Eau Claire County that got a grant racial and ethnic disparity in the juvenile justice system, so I'd be curious to know if you track that or if you even look at it, because a disproportion in the amount of kids of color are sent to the juvenile justice system in Eau Claire County, probably every county, and other kids are given other opportunities. So it would be good to look at that in our county with human services.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you refer to kids of color to court and a child who's white or Caucasian to in-home services?
Sure.
Or, you know, and we're discovering a lot of things, so I think it would be really, and they're the only county that got this grant, but it would be interesting to me because we have a, you know, our county is very colorful, you know? We have a huge Latinx and, you know, but I think that it's interesting, it would be interesting to look at that, so.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. My kind of gut responses, I don't think that Latinos are overrepresented in our numbers, but I'd welcome an opportunity to look through that and kind of see where we're at.
A lot of social workers didn't think that kids of color were disproportionately represented, but when they looked at the data and saw, they were.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk with you and any Eau Claire or whoever about it. I think it'd be interesting to kind of look at our numbers.
Yeah, they're going to be talking more about it, but I just had a stakeholders group about it, and it was fresh in my brain today, so.
Very good. Yes, Mr. Todd?
Quick question, just out of curiosity, plea downs, you know where they plead?
Yes.
So any of these misdemeanors start out with felonies and then plead down to misdemeanor? Just to see, look at the difference when it comes to the chart.
Sure. I don't have those numbers offhand because it's kind of, it'd be complicated and involve kind of parsing that data at a relatively fine level.
But is there a lot of that? I mean, is there some of that?
There's some of that. If, so these numbers track original case filings. So if a matter was originally filed as a misdemeanor, it would be reflected in the misdemeanors bracket. If it was originally filed as a felony, it'd be counted as a felony. I will say that amendments from felonies to misdemeanors is part of kind of a disposition in a case happen. It doesn't happen all the time. It happens usually, you know, for kind of first-time offenders, so, you know, I'll say, use methamphetamine as an example, it's a ready example. So say you're a person who's, you know, in their 30s, minimal if any criminal history, no felony history, you come into court with a possession of methamphetamine offense. It's relatively standard for a person with no felony history and little to no criminal history to be offered a plea disposition that would involve them pleading to the reduced charge of possession of amphetamine, which is like Adderall, which is a misdemeanor offense, and also pleading to a drug paraphernalia offense and going on probation for a period of two years. So compare that to a standard felony possession of methamphetamine offer would be a probation term of three years and then maybe some jail, maybe some other, of course, some other conditions.
But don't you see them coming back? Because without help, when it comes to meth, you can't get over it.
Absolutely. It's a fact, and there's no easy answer. I'll say that we have, you know, Trempeau County has a recovery court, treatment court program. That's not a silver bullet, but I think that if a person is really going to make a break and change their lifestyle from a lifestyle of methamphetamine abuse, they need something as intensive as a recovery court type program, whether that's something that they do in their own life, making real changes in their life, or going through that program or something like it. It's a really incredibly difficult drug to make a break from. It takes a tremendous toll on a person's brain. It takes a tremendous toll kind of on their lifestyle, and, you know, it's so easy, even if you can get clean off the drugs, to go back into the same situation that kind of got you into it in the first place, and we see that time and time again, unfortunately. It's a hard problem. Also, on top of it, unlike with opioids, there's no good medical-assisted therapy for meth use. There's no Suboxone analog to, you know, for methamphetamine. You can't go on a daily therapy to kind of help you stem your methamphetamine cravings in the way that you can with opioids like heroin. So it's a big issue. It's a tough issue. If someone has a great idea as to how to solve it, I haven't heard it. I have my ears open, though, so.
I also see front-hand, I don't necessarily meth, but what drug abuse has done in our community. I don't know how you feel about faith groups getting involved in some of this recovery because I'm part of a couple faith group recovery-type things that I'm involved with and help lead, and I see a lot of people coming through there, whether they're current addicts or former ones. Again, meth's a big thing, and I think getting the faith group organization or church involved in this is definitely a thing, because I've seen how it works in other people's lives and even in my own for different things. So I think that's, like, whether it's the recovery court or the faith groups, sometimes they can be reactive instead of proactive like human services. If they could hit it when they're first starting whatever and get them to help, maybe they won't. It's not a cure-all, but that'll help, not go higher.
I totally agree, and that's exactly the sort of thing that really helps people make life changes, you know? If you can kind of find that higher power and get support through a church community or a, you know, just kind of a community of recovery, that's what helps. That's kind of what works and sustains over time. So, yeah, and I'd be happy to talk to you about that, just to kind of raise awareness for people, like, you know.
There's a couple in the recovery groups in the greater town, Larry, back in 22. Is there any people that come to your door and come through with resources?
Yeah, let's talk about it. Yes, Jeannie?
Well, you know, we have ARPA funds, which we're going to talk about later, but one of the list of, in the list of eligible uses are behavioral health care, mental health treatment, crisis, and substance abuse. So to engage communities and think about how we can help people, we have funds that are available that haven't been used yet. And in my mind, that's like one of the best uses for ARPA funds because the two years of, and the third year of dealing with COVID and being isolated and everything that happened during the last three years has been really dreadful, and I think that should be one of the main focuses of how we support the people in the community who are suffering.
I think that's a great idea, and I would echo that, that in the last few years, we have seen people who've had years, sometimes decades of clean time and sobriety fall off the wagon and relapse just because of, you know, you're at home all day and, or, you know, you're not going to work and, you know, it's kind of back to the idle hands situation. Like, we've seen so many people struggle in the last couple of years, and I think our case numbers reflect it, unfortunately.
Right, and I think that's why juvenile case. Right, and I think that's why juvenile case and CHIPS cases are like through the roof, because kids, kids and families really struggled, and we need to pay attention to that.
Yes.
The meth issue, is that pretty similar to our neighboring counties, then?
It is. Methamphetamine abuse is really rampant in Wisconsin, and particularly in rural counties. For a long time, it was kind of a rural-only issue, but now, even in places like Milwaukee, in Dane County, they're seeing it there, too, and it's a heck of a drug. But, yeah, I can tell you pretty definitively that Jackson County's struggling with it, Buffalo Peppin, Eau Claire Lacrosse, all of our neighboring counties are struggling with a really high methamphetamine caseload. We haven't seen the high numbers for opioids like kind of more urban areas have. Like, I know Lacrosse and Eau Claire and, you know, Milwaukee and Madison deal with a huge number of opioid cases, and for whatever reason, we haven't seen a huge number of them. They're out there, and often, when they kind of come on to law enforcement's radar, it's under tragic circumstances with a person overdosing and being brought back to life through Narcat administration, and then kind of coming into the criminal justice system. But, yeah, methamphetamine is a problem everywhere, especially in rural counties.
Any other questions? Not, thank you, John, very informative.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate that. Good night.
NMD, Sheriff's Update, Mr. Semmerson.
This will be my time to give you a bunch of boring numbers, I guess. This is my time for the quarterly report. This will be for the months of April, May, and June in the sheriff's office. In that time period, we have taken 3,410 calls for service compared to 3,183 in the first quarter of the year. And I would think that that would be expected when the weather turns nice and all the outdoor activities ramp up. I think that's pretty typical. We responded to eight death investigations compared to seven for the first quarter, so that is a typical quarter for us. All these seem really nothing extraordinary, by the way. Forty brand-new drug violation cases were opened up in that quarter, and along John's message there, a high percentage of them have to do with methamphetamine. We have, we take, we receive or open up a lot of calls for drug cases in the county, more than 40. Forty are actual cases that we investigate, and a high number of those cases are methamphetamine cases. Thirty-two simple assaults, which you would probably know as a disorderly conduct, whether it be a verbal argument or maybe a push-and-shoving match, we have 32 of them compared to 20 from the first quarter. Burglaries and thefts are down quite a bit, two burglaries, five thefts in that quarter. I would not have an explanation for that, but typically, we're around five burglaries and maybe 10 or 12 thefts for that time period. Two cars or two motor vehicle thefts as opposed to one for the first quarter. So, fairly consistent numbers, maybe a little bit lower for some of those, but. Crash data, our sheriff's office received phone calls on 251 total crashes in the second quarter compared to 238 in the first quarter. 107 deer crashes versus 77, so a big cause of that increase in total crashes is deer crashes, which, again, is typical. January, February, and March, we don't take a lot of deer crashes versus April, May, and June, when the bugs start and the fawns are out, we typically see a rise there, so that's not surprising. Forty-four property damage crashes, 14 injury crashes, and zero fatalities, and that is to date. So, that's a good statistic, that's the first time I've been able to report that, I think, in my four years, or three and a half years as sheriff, halfway through the year to not have any. So, as far as enforcement for traffic enforcement, we had 153 citations issued in that time period versus 178 in the first quarter. Eleven non-traffic citations, which are county ordinance violations that could be for traffic or criminal matters that we have an ordinance for, and 328 warnings. The warnings are up significantly, the citations and the NTCs are down quite a bit. I will say, part of the reason it's down is because we were down four deputies in this quarter. For almost the entire four quarters, we were down four deputies who were on FMLA leave. So, those numbers stand to reason, I guess, that they're a little lower. The 328 warnings is about 40 higher than normal, and just as luck would have it, on June 24th, we did do a traffic detail with the Wisconsin State Patrol, which was an aerial enforcement detail. When Highway 93 was redone a couple of years ago, we did have the highway department mark those so that we could have the state patrol come down with an airplane, and we did that on June 24th, and that resulted in 40 traffic stops in about a three-hour time period, and that was in the Chimney Rock area. So, most of those resulted in warnings, hence our warnings are up for the quarter, so. Mental health, we have responded to 22 calls for mental health crisis, and that's compared to 20 in the first quarter, so that's holding about the same. The jail, in the first quarter, we were averaging about 30 inmates, 30 to 32 inmates per day. I don't have an average, but today's number, as of, for just today, we had 26 in custody in the jail. Three of them in out-of-county, under contract, three on electronic monitoring, and one in another jail, serving time there, but also getting credit for our time while they're serving time there. So, we have 19 in our jail today, and about a total of 26. Our out-of-county housing has been down quite a bit in the last couple of months, so that's some good news on the budget front. We're looking really good there, so. Couple of incidents I just want to mention here, and this has to do with heroin or opioid problems. We had two saves in our jail at the end of June, which likely would have resulted in death had our jail staff not been alert and monitoring the cameras and see what's going on. On one of them, there was a hanging, it was a very high-needs inmate that we've had in and out of our custody over the last 18 months or so. Attempted to hang himself in a jail, and an alert jailer noticed that on the monitors, and he was taken down, taken to the hospital, and he's doing well today, thankfully for that. That was on June 27th. On June 30th, we had an incident where a person was brought over from probation and parole. Although there may have been signs of drug use, there certainly was no symptoms that this gentleman was in peril. While they were booking him in, he fell off of the chair, went unconscious, and was in total cardiac arrest within seconds of the onset. Jail staff, including our medical provider, ended up initiating, or giving four doses of Narcan, and by the time they got him to the hospital, he was coming around again. This is the first witnessed event that I've ever seen with Narcan. I, you know, I talk about it a lot, and my deputies have it, we've given it a lot, this is the first one I've witnessed, and it was nothing less than amazing what that staff was doing up there, and there will be some formal sort of recognition for them at some point here. So, it was cooperation between the jail staff, our medical provider, and a private citizen who works for the ambulance company was off-duty, even responded to the jail. And so, luckily, we have two bad incidents in the jail, both of them resulted in, had a good outcome, so. Another incident in June was a crash, a simple drive off the road, maybe a little bit of property damage. By the time officers got there, the driver was unconscious, and three doses of Narcan were administered, and that person is alive today because of that as well. So, we, you know, this is in a one-week period, we have three saves with Narcan, which is great, but it's concerning as well, if you know what I mean, so. The only other thing I want to speak of is, last Monday, we opened up a detour that ran through Dodge, because Highway 54 and 35 were shut down completely. Semi-traffic was routed to Alma, Elleva, down to Indy Pennants, Arcadia, and then down to Centerville, and you can imagine how many truck drivers probably didn't want to go that route, so. So, by, cars and light trucks were routed up County Road P in Buffalo County, and then County Road G in Tremolo County. And I was very concerned, because it's not, there's not a lot of room in Dodge, if you've been through there, there's not a lot of room for a detour of a highway that has 10,000 cars and trucks a day going on it. So, by noon, emails and phone calls were just going through the sky with the Buffalo Highway Department, Tremolo County Highway Department, and the sheriff's personal desk. We did respond, we did have a plan in place already. Both Sheriff Schmidt and I entered into an agreement that our deputies would have joint powers in both counties on those roads, so that if one was in the area, they could just come into our county patrol the same road, and vice versa. We did have that in place already, and we did have the night shift, Sunday night start and early into Monday morning, but the problems really started Monday morning, when people woke up and the detour was there, and by noon, we had all these issues. We did respond right away, and I got a call from, I got a call from a gentleman at noon on Monday who was not happy at all. I got a call from him at noon on Tuesday, who was very thankful that we responded the way we did, and I don't think we've had any incidents there to date, and I'm not hearing any reports of the trucks or high speed like we were. Not saying it's not happening, but if it were still happening like it was, I would be, I'd be reading emails tonight, probably, and not giving this report, and rightfully so. So, happy to report that I think we've mitigated a severe problem there. It's a two-week detour with optimism that it could be a week or maybe just more than a week, so.
Early, they might actually get done early?
That was a report made to me before it started, so now I haven't got a progress report during, you know how everything goes, nothing goes as planned, so.
Is that true that 53 Blair, which will be closed August 1st?
I don't know the exact date, I can tell you it's true, because I saw the same report that probably all of you did, but I don't know the exact details.
Know the detours?
I don't. They're out there, but I don't know them. And it's just, it's a stretch between Blair and County Road I, which is about a mile and a half, but the whole 53 between Blair and Ettrick, for sure, is going to be closed, so.
It's closed in Eau Claire County, too, by bracket, and I just stayed away from there.
Yeah. I-94 in our county, last week was, the entire county, the three-and-a-half-mile stretch is going to be under construction in our county, started last week. So, I know Al's got a number of projects on county roads going on right now, I don't know where in the stage he's at with those, but, so, yeah. So, well, three years ago, we had, three or four years ago, we had Highway 93 and 53 and County Road D. There was a time when you couldn't get from the north to the south without a town road, so, but I hope it don't get that bad, so.
You can always get to strong grocery stores there if you need food.
There you go. So, that's kind of in a nutshell what's been going on. I could probably go on and on, but if you guys have questions, I'll try to answer them, or I'll get answers for you, I guess.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Are the sections closed for the on and off ramps for 94?
They are not yet, but they will be, the way I understand it. They're going to be doing some ramp work as well in Osseo.
Yeah, they were, the whole side of the ramp was all ripped apart today when I was there, so I'm guessing they'll be closed.
Yep.
How do you get on the interstate?
You'd probably have to go to Foster.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and that one isn't that terrible, bad. Highway 53 is a good road right to Foster, so, but I would, I would plan, you know, maybe a five- or 10-minute delay if you're going to use the interstate and get on in Osseo normally.
Yeah, same.
Any other questions?
Watch Netflix.
If you can't get retired, you have an option.
Exactly. I'm sorry.
I've been on many detours in my 40 years of a social worker.
Any more questions, Brett?
Will you be letting us know when you do the recognition for the people who were involved in saving?
Yes, I'd like to do it in presence of the county board, so. I don't, we don't have a formal process in place, and I'm going to, you know, I'm going to throw myself under the bus. We should have. Not all law enforcement agencies do that, but I certainly see the benefit of it, and now with these three events right here, you know, unfortunately, I have to start somewhere, so there's going to be some that were left off, but I think it's very important that we do that, and I want you to meet those folks that did that, so.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There are none, thank you, Brett.
Thank you very much.
Resolutions is allocation of ARPA funds. To me, this thing was postponed indefinitely back in April, so I'm going to turn it over to corporate counsel to explain whether we can bring it back or not, or...
Sure. So, in the Roberts rules, or, back up, the county board doesn't have a specific rule that addresses this particular motion to postpone indefinitely, so we defer to Roberts rules. And so, basically, doing some, looking at that, typically, a motion to postpone indefinitely is a tool used to essentially kill a motion that's on the floor, so it never comes back. So, that's what was done in the April meeting. However, a motion to postpone indefinitely is subject to a motion to renew. And a motion to renew, if it's made, excuse me, seconded it, and the majority vote in favor of it, you can actually bring back an issue that was previously not decided, and then you can act on it. So, essentially, if someone does make a motion to renew, and you second it, and the majority approves that motion, you can revisit this resolution this evening. If that doesn't happen, the alternative really is that some committee just needs to forward on a resolution to reconsider this particular topic in some form or fashion. So, those are really the two options that, in my opinion, would be available to the board tonight. Yes?
So, we need a motion to...
I don't know if you had a question, or is he was going to...
A statement.
Statement, okay.
When I made that motion in April, it was not my, I didn't have the information, and it was not my intent to kill it for good.
Sure.
It was a motion to postpone, so more information could be collected. We had a brand-new board with 11 new faces, and I guess I would like to make a motion to bring it back.
And I wanted to add one thing, based on your clarification there as well. If you do bring the motion back, and it is under consideration, you don't have to vote on it tonight, you can postpone it till a certain date, you can send it to a committee, you can do whatever you want with it at that point. I'm not saying that that's what you should do, but it really is subject to whatever motions you want to do at that point, once it's brought back.
It's my understanding that, should the motion I just made to bring it back passes, there'd have to be another motion in order to either...
To pass the actual resolution.
Do that or revisit it at a later date.
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second to Mr. Schreiner's motion?
Second.
Second to Mr. Nelson. Do we have to call a roll on this, or just...
Just, it's a simple majority.
Okay, simple majority. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay, no.
I just heard three.
I think it was three noes. So, I think it passes to reiterate the motion, if you want to read the resolution.
And the resolution that I'm going to actually be reading is the resolution that was presented by the old executive finance committee. Not that they're old, but I mean...
The former members.
The former members, yes, okay.
Was there, can I ask a question before you read that, or not?
Maybe you should.
I should wait till later?
Should wait until I read it, and then the motion gets on the floor, I suppose.
Whereas Tremolo County, yeah, Tremolo County has received a grant of just over $5.7 million from the American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA. Whereas ARPA provides a number of categories for permissible uses of the ARPA funds, and whereas one category allows the county to claim the grant money as lost revenue, which allows the county flexibility in allocating the funds to certain projects within the county. And whereas, in 2020, Tremolo County committed to a $43 million Justice Center building project, the largest single financial commitment the county has made in the last 40 years. And whereas, due to recent supply chain disruptions and rising in... And whereas due to recent supply chain disruptions and rising inflation, the county has been forced to spend the previously budgeted Justice Center Building Project Contingency Fund balance and the Furniture Fixtures and Equipment FFE Fund balance, even though the size and scope of the project has not expanded in any way. And whereas the county is already committed to this project and properly funding this project is of the highest priority, now be it resolved that the Tremolo County Board of Supervisors hereby allocates $1.5 million of its ARPA grant funds to the Justice Center Building Project Contingency Fund and $870,000 to the FFE Fund. Do you want me to read the old, old names? Old names. Introduced by Executive Finance Committee Chuck Wallach, Richard Sasha, George Brandt, John Austin, Tim Seglan.
Their motion to approve?
No.
It wasn't by Dan Schreiner. Second to that?
Second.
Second to Mr. Sasha? No, you can ask.
Has the current Executive Finance Committee introduced a resolution? This is, in my brain, it would seem like it should go back to that committee to prepare a new resolution and not one that's based on what an old group of, not old group, but a prior, prior committee had put together. Sorry, I didn't mean old.
Just to answer your question, the, because this is a renew of the original resolution, it's still the original resolution as stands.
Okay.
So it's my understanding that it has not gone back to the Executive Finance Committee with the new membership.
Okay.
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead.
I would like to. I believe the property and the executive finance met jointly on this topic to bring it back in for consideration. So yes, and that's actually how it got on the agenda and I think Sam can actually.
I agree with Mr. Miller's statement.
Yeah, we had a couple weeks ago.
It was on, what day was it?
July 11th.
July 11th. We, being the chair of the finance committee, we did bring it up and talked about it on there with the property committee. And I believe it did pass, the resolution did pass there to bring it back to the full board.
Okay.
It was unanimous to bring it back. I don't know what the position our individual members are, but.
Well, I'm going to vote no when it's time to vote and I just want to remind people the intent of ARPA funds was to support and help people who suffered during the COVID, during being isolated and, you know, not going anywhere. And we have a list of uses for ARPA funds, which include things that I think are really critical in this county. Behavioral health care, mental health treatment, substance abuse, crisis intervention, to work with impacted parties through COVID. I mean, this is all COVID-related. We got this money because of the pandemic. Impacted industries, which they've noted, tourism, travel, hospitality, nonprofits, housing, we talk a lot about housing, there is no place for people to live, homelessness, affordable housing, housing vouchers, residential council service, or residential counseling, healthy environments, childcare, enhanced child welfare services. We had a whole presentation to the board about childcare, the lack of childcare in this county. I feel like those funds need to go to the, to the people who really lived and died during this pandemic. And I, I get that the, building the jail needs money, but so do the people who live here and have struggled and continue to struggle.
In part, that's my concern as well, Jeanie. I don't doubt that we need to put some monies towards the overages, but having a large proportion of those going to just that with minimal leftover for some of this under other funding. We have things like broadband and other things coming down the pike that can benefit people. The other thing is that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, that we don't have to determine how to spend these funds till the end of the year.
Next year.
Next year. Next year.
Year after next. 2024.
No. I thought you had to use, allocate them by the end of this year, use them by the end of 2024.
No, allocate them by the end of 2024 and spent by 2026.
Six, okay, okay. So I think that leaves us time to determine that. I also believe that the building's not done yet. It's great that, you know, after initial overages, that they've stayed on track with the building. But I don't fully think that we know what that end number is going to be. And I, I think we are going to need to put some monies there. But I guess I would like to see some of the eggs in the basket per se in other areas such as health and human services.
Since we do have Mr. Kurt still here, we should ask him, what is it going to be? What's the overage is going to be? What are we looking at for cost from, for the next year? Because he's been, he would like to.
Yep.
Help, help, help us out to make a good decision on these ARPA funds because we're obviously at a standstill.
Absolutely. So the numbers that are in this resolution, I actually worked with that old Exec and Finance Committee to put it together. And it was just based on percentages. So the $1.5 million that is a contingency is just historical data and we typically see a 3% to 5% construction contingency on this project. So on $40 million, it would have been $1.2 million, right? We got up to that $44 million. We carried this 1.5 as a placeholder. And what I shared with property and exec finance last Monday is that it is our goal to spend as little as we have to in that contingency fund. But it doesn't make sense to enter into the project and continue to move along without having anything there. Now, the FFNE number, that 870, you can plan that that's going to be spent, okay? There is furniture that needs to be done. There's some equipment that needs to be allocated to that. So the 870 is a number that when you pass this, it's spent. You need to, you need to visualize that that money is going to be spent. The 1.5 is a placeholder that's there right now, which we have about $100,000 of changes that were brought to property this month that do need to be approved. They're dealing with some skylight changes. There's some hardware changes that need to be made. So to answer your question, I can't give you a definitive number, but my goal is that that 1.5 wouldn't be entirely consumed. If I had to give you a number, it's probably less than a million dollars. So there is some, some fluff in there, if you want to call it that. And on purpose, right? I don't want to have this discussion again. I want to come back and say, hey, we had money left over from contingency and it goes back in there. Historically, we've been able to keep it between that 3% to 5%. So there's no magical equation there. It's just based on historical data. Now, to the point that was made, I think that there's been a great, there's been great decisions by the committee, by our teams to be able to find ways to reduce costs. We actually have some CBs that are, that have saved money. It's not all just adding money, but there are changes that will take place and we need to be prepared for that. So we are, one of the things we talked about at the committee level, and if I overspeak, just tell me to shut up. We plan to have this building turned over to you late in 2023, right? So we're talking fall of 2023. You move in, there's a shakedown period that's about eight weeks where the sheriff's going to get in there. They're going to, they're going to utilize their new equipment before we move people in. So let's say calendar year, end of 2023, the project will be done. So the unknowns will be known of what that number is. And I think the discussion we talked about at the committee is then you have another full calendar year to identify what those elements are, or allocation to the other programs. Not that we're just earmarking and saying it won't go to the programs. We're going to diligently work with the committees, with the contractors to save as much of it as possible, so.
I just need to understand, so the 1.5 million, you're talking about a contingency and then taking another 870 from ARPA funds to be used right away?
Yes, the total number is 2,370 out of the 5.7.
So that's half of what, what we got for programs. Okay, well.
5.7.
Okay, sorry. I'm a social worker and I'm a mathematician.
Hey, Kurt.
Um, you know, I feel really strongly about this. And one of the, one of the other areas of, that were highlighted as eligible uses for ARPA funds is health disparities, community health works, public benefits, and community violence intervention. We've just talked about what's happening in our county with the increase in juveniles being referred to court, the huge number of methamphetamine cases and, you know, taking that money and putting it in a building, again, the people in the county who suffered during the pandemic lose out. So I can't support it. I'm sorry.
I understand that. I'm not arguing it. I just want to share with you discussions that we've had at other counties because you all know how the ARPA money went. It was thrown out there, right? This money was out there. There were so many strings attached to it, people were afraid to touch it, you know? It was like the plague. Are we going to have to pay this back? Where was it? And it kind of sat there, right? Well, the strings were then removed for the first $10 million. And what the approach is, is that, and the philosophy behind this, this package here is there's elements within the structure which do help those situations. There's program space, there's things that are going to happen in that new building that if we don't finish it, aren't going to be there. And the emergency response, we are putting a new dispatch center that's in there. So there's elements in there that do provide help to those that are in need. And to, and to compound it is that, I'm not blaming it all on it, but it's a huge factor that COVID and what happened over the course of those years has caused this escalation in price. It wasn't that you at the county said, hey, let's just stick more scope into the project. You didn't. Trust me, you didn't. That there was a market that really drove it. So I'm not arguing with you. I'm just giving you kind of a logic of things that have been considered for that, so.
This is my last time to talk. It's my third. We haven't real, we haven't really, as a group, we haven't formed a committee to look at how to use ARPA funds. It's been very spotty and haphazard and I feel like we have this money and we're just, are we going to throw it here? Are we going to put it here? We haven't talked about how to develop programs. I know that Human Services had, you know, a presentation about having different areas of the county, having, trying to bring communities together to help people, you know, our elderly population, because, you know, not, you know, it's just so complicated and we haven't taken the time to look at how can we really use this money and how can it really benefit our county? And the people who live here who, who got screwed during COVID, lost their jobs, kids, you know, a lot of isolation, a lot of things happened, so. I feel like we need to really have some good conversations about how we can use this most, that would be most beneficial. I can't really, I'm having a hard time explaining it because I just feel so strongly that this money needs to go to the people who live here.
Hey Kurt, I think since we're on the topic, I think everybody should know the full scope of what we're over on this project. It's not just the FFE and the contingency we're talking about. The finance committee's talked a lot about what do we do to pay for this bill or this building? So we're on an overage of, in excess of probably $9 million when you took about today's dollars to fix, finish that building. Can you speak to those details?
Sure. So part of the 44 million, as you're all aware, 40 million was for the Justice Center, three and a half was for the renovation. When all the bids came in and were over budget, we exceed that number, you know, we're in the 44 million. So as we look to find reductions, we paused any further design on what's happening in here. There's no funds to support any renovation for the existing courthouse. At the time, when we had a budget of three and a half million dollars, that was before everything continued to climb. So it was asked at property and exec finance of what is that number? The exercise that I recommended would be to meet with the department heads, because there's new department heads that are here. People that were there and put that floor plan together no longer are here. We've got new people. So we need to exercise the process of refining a floor plan and then putting a number to what Dave is talking about. You know, I can, I can guess what that number is. Things have jumped 20 and 30%. So if you want to take 20 and 30% and add it on three and a half million dollars, it's more than three and a half million dollars. But we could revisit what that scope is. There's things that we could do. We could identify areas that, the only thing that's done is finishes and mechanical, electrical remains as is. But those are all decisions that you need to make, knowing that it's not addressing what it was originally. So to Dave's point, there was larger scope that was in that 43 and a half that is, that doesn't have funding to support it. So does that help?
Yeah, thank you. So one other thing to pick, make a note, as Mr. Schreiner was an advocate for spending this money or putting into the resolution, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. What I'm saying here is we got to find out a way to get more money. So to the extent that we may even need to dip into more ARPA funds, we might need to consider that. So there could be, you know, let's not pass this, but then we come up with a whole new resolution that puts even more money towards it, to the, to our abilities of the law that says how we spend the money. So if you vote for it, we're spending that. I'm telling you, if you don't for it, move for it, we're probably going to have to come back with another resolution to figure out how to spend more of it. That's, that's a very real possibility because we're way over budget.
Mr. Chairman, I've had conversations with two different people in the last three or four days in reference to the cost of this building. Would you explain, let me, let me go back. What I hear the people saying is that we are not respecting, or the bids that were made, we're not respecting those bids or the bidder themselves are coming in and asking for more funding.
No.
Would you explain that? And then I want to follow up with something.
So the way the project is bid, we bid it in multiple bid categories. So I don't want to bore you with all of them, but the plumbing is different than the HVAC. The HVAC is different than the electrical, so it's different categories. Any contractor could come in and bid multiple categories. So somebody could have walked in and said, I'm going to do mechanical, plumbing and electrical. Here's my lump number. And we take the other three that we get and we compare them, right? They bid a document set that was issued by the county from Venture with, with our involvement as well, Samuel's. And that's what they bid on. They have a contract that they're bound to for the time that they bid it with a committed date and a timeframe to finish that work, right? The changes that we're talking about on these CBs are things that we, when I say we, the construction manager, we get feedback as we identify these elements that are either coordinated on the documents that weren't clearly defined, or we decide we're going to make changes and we say those changes are needed. And then we make sure that the pricing is in line with where the markets are. So contractors that walk in and said, hey, now we're getting the request, don't get me wrong, Dick. We're getting contractors that say, hey, you know what? We priced this as, I can't get that material for that. Our, our direction to them is, we're sorry, this is business. You have to, you've, you've got a contract that you're committed to, you need to provide that, right? So we do get those requests. That's not what we're bringing to you. We're bringing to you changes that have been made from the construction documents and we're saying, yes, we need these. Trust me, if we didn't need them, I wouldn't be telling you that we needed them. We would be saying, no, we have a budget issue here. We need to be able to keep this in compliance. So they are bound to that. They, they provide a bond for that if they were default, so we could pull their bond if we needed to. We're not in that situation with any of those contractors. But like I shared with you before, I, I feel for them because I know what's happening in the market. I know that from the day they bid it until when they go to procure it, the prices skyrocketed. They absolutely did.
Okay, a follow-up question. When this project was envisioned and when it was, when it was designed and so forth and so on, when those bids were requested, the reason why the bids were higher was due to what?
Market.
Market. The cost of everything going up.
Yes. We had, we had two early bid packages that were on budget. We tracked them consistently with scope and where we were and the market just absolutely shot up. Your, your project is not the only one I have issues with because that's what happened with the market. And I'm going to tell you, I can stand behind our numbers. We are accurate with our numbers and this market has kicked our tail. I'm being dead honest with you. We did not forecast. We did not expect this would happen. We did not expect this would happen. And any contractor that tells you that they did, our construction managers lying to you because they did not see this happening. They didn't.
Yeah. I, I think the media is not necessarily reporting everything completely honest. Or they don't have enough information. But I would encourage them to consider the comments that Kurt has made this evening. And so our citizenry in the county have a better perspective of this project. Now, I want to, I want to, if I can finish up my comment, and it's relating to what, sort of what Jeannie has, has talked to, in a way. We have a project that obviously is, is, could very well use up the, all the ARPA money, to be honest with you. What options do we have? I'm just posing it as a question to all of us here. What options do we have? In order to complete the project, including the renovation, we're going to have to borrow money. So we have, we do have that as an option. If that is satisfactory with this board and you're willing to commit to borrowing, probably close to what is sitting in that ARPA fund, that's about what it may cost. And I think you were alluding to that, David. Is that what we want to do? Those, that's an option we have. If we want to benefit the, the whole county, an option is to use the ARPA. When I say that, it will, it will not benefit necessarily a lot of the people that Jeannie is concerned with. But it will affect all of our taxes. We will all save money over, what, is it 25 years, Paul?
Twenty.
Twenty years. It's going to save some, some money. So I, you know, these are the options we have sitting in front of us. So I think we have to, that's what we have. We have to deal with those particular issues. So I guess we all need to think about that very seriously. Because we do have, the renovation, I walked through the building with, with our social human service committee last week, looking at what changes that they would like to see. There's a lot of work. It's going to be expensive. So that's sitting there. So it's, 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 it isn't bleak, but it is serious. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, like I, just in general, I did have a citizen reach out to me at one of these carnival or something. And just in general, I know, they don't know what goes on behind the scenes, like some board members have said. But the citizenry that's already out there, that's already angry that the jail was even considered in the first place, and then they hear about this overage on top of that, they're even more mad. So I could see where they're coming from on a, on a thing too. Because the lady come, did come to me and saying, the jail shouldn't have been approved and then you guys are over budget, more or less like, what the? She was not happy. So I can see in, 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 to a certain degree where she's coming from. And I could also see where Ms. Nutter is coming from, to a certain degree, that we do need to, puts, in an ideal situation with the people, put some of that toward mental health services. As my own human services or social services background and recovery background, I've seen people suffer through this pandemic 10 times worse. So I could see both sides of it too. And this ARPA money is going to be gone, at least a good portion of it. And I could see where she's coming from, that she feels that people that have been affected by this pandemic may be left out. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, with, with everything being said, with about how we want to spend ARPA money, ARPA money is only there for a brief moment. We got 20 years to pay for this building. We got to come within our budget. So we got to start tightening our belts and get ready to suffer for 20 years because of the previous board decided to put up this new building. So now we have to look at our budgets really close and start where we got to cut the fat to pay for this building. So we can fund some of these other things. But we are stuck with this. We, this is what we have been handed. This board has been given this building, this budget. We got to come together and start figuring out how we want to do all this. Now, on the, for, for the ARPA funds, we are supposed to, the Finance Committee is working on it. We are presenting this to help cover some of the costs at this moment. We're not saying we're going to blow all of this for the, for the project. We'd like to spend it in other areas too. So with that being said, I know at the, at the Finance Committee, we did say we want to drop it 1% under the budget. That's a shot in the dark. We were just guessing. We want to come with under 100%. Would we like more? Absolutely. But are we going to get there? Who knows? But we need to start tightening belts to be able to fund everything before we go bankrupt. Because if we are already at 50%, I believe, in debt. Is that correct? Am I correct on that? We, but we're, 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 we are more in debt than we should be because we decided to put up a jail, which we need. If you look, go through the old jail, it is not that great. It is broke down. We needed an update. But we could have done it in sections too. Instead of just make a big building, we could have done it in totally different sections. But it's all right. This is what we're handed. We got to make, we got to make the right decision on everything.
Is it audio?
No, he coughed.
Oh.
I yield my time.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why don't we talk a little bit about, and I don't know if people are scared to talk about it, but what the jail is going to do for everybody out there also. So one, how much money are we wasting on sending people to other places? How much money are we wasting on sending somebody on drugs back out on the street to go infect somebody that wasn't on drugs? And now they're going to be in the system affecting other people. So we got to look at, and I don't know if Brett can do it, and I don't know how hard it would be to do it. What is this jail really going to save us or make Tremblow County? I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about making money off of criminals, but it's going to make money. No matter how you look at it, it's going to help pay for that building in the long run, if anybody wants to talk about it or not. I mean, other jails, they don't have room. Guess where they're going?
Right.
Tremblow County, because we have the room. So this is the kind of things that we got to look at too, when it comes to making money for Tremblow County. So it ain't all about spending all the money or all the debt we're going to have. Let's look at, okay, now we got to look at, what would you say as a business guy, profit? As in, what it's going to, what we're going to bring back to the jail to pay it off earlier than that 20 years?
Brett, do you have any comments?
I'm dying for this.
So, so, so I, I'm going to be cautious when I say this, but we didn't build this project to make revenue. We built this project to serve the needs of Tremblow County for 50 years. When we started, Dan can remember back in, in the 1990s, when they first started talking about replacing the current jail, we were housing, you know, upper, the, the number was upwards of $300,000, $400,000 a year to Chippewa County primarily then, to house our inmates out of county. And it didn't go away. And we were talking about average daily populations of 50, you know, 55. And you heard my report tonight, we're down to 26. Again, you know, we, we can't forecast who's going to go to jail, who's not going to go to jail, and how many of them are at any given time. So maybe now is a good time to talk about the potential revenue for this jail. If we, if we build a 78, well, we're building a 78-bed facility, we can house 85% of those, or we can utilize 85% of those beds. What's that bring us down to around 62, 63? And if we have an average daily population of 30, you can do the math. We could, we could house inmates at, you know, the, our, our contracts vary from 45 to, to $60 per day, per inmate. So I guess if you, if you forecast based on current trends for the next few years, there's potentially some significant revenue for that jail, even though that is not why we built it. But why not do it if we can? And we can do it with the same amount of staff that we have up there today. So I think we'd be very responsible to look at that. I would like to comment a little bit about why we're building it in relation to COVID. The previous board members who are still here today heard me report at a meeting back in early 2019, when we really started to get the ball rolling, excuse me, 2020, when COVID came. This, this turned into more than a bed number thing. This turned into our bill inability to safely house inmates. We can't keep our inmates safe. We can't keep our staff safe because of COVID. Our staff came to work. They didn't have the option of, of being unemployed. They were the necessity. They were the, I don't, there was a term, essential. They were essential workers. And they, they came here even though it was as dire a situation as could be. It's, it was, the concerns were similar to nursing homes and other residential care facilities. We couldn't bring this into our jail and we couldn't be having our staff affected by it. So the design of the new jail really takes that into consideration. Right now, we have seven, seven ways to segregate and isolate up there, which means that we would, if we had to use all seven of them, we would have seven inmates. Or, or inmates of same problems could be housed in the same cell. But the new facility gives us nearly 20 ways to isolate and segregate, and many more beds for those that can be housed together in those situations. So COVID really turned us from a bed number to the ability to keep us safe. And at the same time, our numbers are going down. And I think I, I see a high potential of being able to, to use this as a revenue item. So I hope that answers the questioner, kind of what Mr. Todd was getting to. So.
Brett, you will be one. And then again, I'm, I'm with Brett. I don't give all the jails to make money. But one of the things that happened with COVID is there are very few jails in the state that have special needs cells that you have. And the price per day and the bed rental on that is through the roof. It would give you opportunity because you, you will have the ability to do so.
And, and when you say through the roof, we're not talking hundreds of dollars per day, thousands of dollars per day. One particular county in the northern end of the state gets for one inmate in a special needs bed. And yes, it's, it's a little bit more staff intensive, but the, the design of this makes it so it's manageable. So.
So we have to, in the long run, in my opinion, be taking some of that money, like the ARPA funds, and helping these people as we have the money and as we borrow it.
Jackson County is in the process of building a jail.
Jackson County is, Wood County, Winona across the river is. But there are, you know, there's a county right in the center part of the state that they're housing over 150 inmates out of county every day. So there's still a significant need for inmate population. And, you know, who knows what'll happen with, with justice reform. But there is talk that instead of prison sentences for certain crimes, they would like to see jail sentences, which is going to bring prison numbers down, but jail numbers up. So I, I foresee that there's going to be a need for housing, no matter how many new jails get built in the next 10 years. So.
Is that, are the special jail cells, is that for substance abuse or mental health? And how many of those are being?
Everything. Any, anything that would be a high, a high needs inmate. They're, they're negative air pressure for contagious disease.
Okay.
They are, we have two that are, they're basically rubber rooms so that persons who are in crisis and are trying to harm themselves have a significantly less chance of doing that. They are fully, I mean, each one has its own shower, its own bathroom, its own TV. We can keep a person in there and still give them all the amenities that everybody else has as well. So.
Sounds good. The negative air pressure sounds good too, especially.
That was huge. We, we could only convert one of our current cells to a negative pressure just to help us a little bit during the COVID crisis when every one of them should have been. So.
Any other questions, Brett? Or Kurt?
Um, I think the sheriff and our department heads have done a lot to mitigate the, not only COVID, but the financial aspect as best they can considering. So I, I hate to say this, and it's, no matter what we do, it's not going to be, it's not, people aren't going to like it. It's, it's a basically a tough situation we're handed, basically. But I, I do see if we do quote make revenue, I think, I agree with like some of those board members, needs to go back to programs like mental health and others to, I, I see that where people might be angry that it's all, not that the jail doesn't need it, but I could see why people are a little eerie about it going to a jail.
So I have similar concerns that Supervisor Nutter has as far as what the money is deemed for. But then also, I mean, we know the absolute need for the jail, which has been decades in the making and then will last for decades. But from what I'm understanding, like from those on the Executive Finance Committee, this is, whether we approve this tonight or not, it's just going to come back with asking for more, or we borrow money. And I, I guess I'm of the thought too, that we should take a little bit more time to discuss what these should be for. But I also want to know, like, what's the sense of urgency for replacing these?
So the, the construction bulletins that we have brought to the committee?
So the construction bulletins that we did bring to the committee, I don't remember what the total, final number was, but just under 100 grand, are decisions that need to be approved so that they can continue to move forward with those changes. And right now, because there is no additional funds, the Property Committee doesn't have the authority to approve them. So that's why we wanted to earmark this funding there so that they could approve them as they come in. And there will be more that will be coming. So we've kind of delayed these for a couple of months now because last month, when I told you, I told you they were coming, kind of hoping we would have a decision here. Do we need all 2.3 today? No. But it would be nice to have something so that we can continue to move forward with that. So if there's something here that you want to revise it and it ends up being a, a smaller number, with the understanding that we would come back with more detail, I think that would work. But there needs to be something there. I, I just wouldn't want to delay it too long. So.
What with that, is there another number that you guys would be comfortable with?
Well, more than 100,000 right now, so I could have them approve that. I mean, I think if you said a half a million, the FFE, the furniture, we are going to need to purchase that soon because lead times in the world nowadays are like crazy long, right? And, and that's a definite that we need. So I would like to get that sooner. I mean, if, if you approve the 70 next month, I, we're probably still okay, Kurt. I, I don't know. But from a contingency perspective, you know, it would be nice to get something over that 100 grand today. And the FFE, it'd be nice to get that stuff ordered. So I know that's not a perfect answer. But.
It helps.
Yeah.
I'd like to call the question.
Question's been called. As of right now, the motion is, and second, to approve 1.5 million for a contingency fund and 870,000 for fixtures and furniture fixtures. Hang on. Does it require a roll call? Because there's money involved. Do you want us to call the roll?
I'm ready if you are.
Yeah.
Richard Sasham.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yep.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yeah.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeannie Nutter.
No.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
No.
15 to 2.
15 to 2, a cap. Okay, and B, environmental land use, rezone exclusive ag to residential.
Whereas Curtis D. and Charlotte M. Beck, landowner petitioner, Blair, Wisconsin, have requested the rezone of a parcel of land in the town of Preston for the purpose of creating a separate residential parcel for a family member. And whereas the rezone is on approximately 14 acres, more or less, and whereas a public hearing was held pursuant to section 59.69, parentheses, five of the Wisconsin statutes, and whereas the town of Preston supports the rezone request, and whereas the Environment and Land Use Committee moved to rezone this parcel from exclusive agriculture two, EA2, to residential eight, R8, and it appears that the zoning change request is appropriate under the circumstances. Now be it resolved that the county adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning district boundaries as indicated, introduced by Environment and Land Use Committee, Stacy Klein, David Larson, Kellen Nelson, Andrew Todd, Randy Severson, Anthony Munson.
Awesome by Mr. Nelson, taking emphasis on Nutter. Any discussion? Mike's here to bring us up to the end on the.
We, we had a public hearing.
Okay. David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes, sir.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasham.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
17-0.
Board of Health, Great River United Way grant budget adjustment.
Whereas the Tremple County Health Department is a recipient of a grant from Great Rivers United Way in the amount of $19,999.60. Whereas the grant funds do not require any county matching funds, but need to be added to the 2022 budget. Whereas these funds will be used for health department staff wages to process needs assessment data, hold focus groups for community health improvement planning, and engage local stakeholders in the county for community conversations that address barriers to health improvement and health equity. Now be it resolved that $19,999.60 be added to the 2022 Public Health Revenue Account 201.5, that should be a four something, but I'll have to go back, because that number isn't right, 54121, to be used for grant expenses of wages, benefits. Oh, I see how they did it. We'll have to come back with a revenue account there, anyway. Expenses of wages, benefits, and travel expenses. Expense accounts are 201.54121.111, $14,050, 201.54121.151, $871.10, 201.54121.152, $913.25, 201.54121.153, $203.73, 201.54121.154, $3,700, and 201.54121.339, $261.52. Introduced by Board of Health Committee, Bridget Turner, Heather Fritsch, Dr. William Backsa, Kevin Adams, Stacy Klein, Pam Nelson, Dr. Kim Breedenbach.
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Fritz, seconded by Turner.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah. Aaron, would you like to get up here? Mr. Newberry?
Who was it?
Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
This is in reference to both of these resolutions, so I think you can respond to both of them, perhaps. Does this involve hiring any new staff, either one of these?
No, neither of those. The Great Rivers United Way money is a grant that the Great Rivers United Way got and hired, they hired a staff. It's simply, they're compensating us to direct that staff to do some of the work that the Health Department would like to be doing, anyway. So they have hired staff with their grant that they have. They are just subcontracting with us to direct them on some of these activities.
Some of your people will be doing some of this work, the legwork, then?
No, not legwork, just more, more just coordinating with the people that are doing, with the person that's doing the work, to make sure that we're getting the, the work that we need to have done.
Now, the, the, the second one, the second one will be taking up, it, it sounds like there'll be some contract services?
Yes.
You haven't done a motion on that one yet.
Well, I, he can answer both of them, can't he, and be done with it. So we can.
I think we have to take one resolution at a time.
Okay. I'll save it.
Is there any other questions? There are none. Call the roll.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
John Austin. Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes, sir.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasham.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd. Whoops. 16 to 0, then.
You can ask when it gets back.
I'll leave it like that.
Next one is Public Health Workforce Grant Budget Adjustment.
Whereas the Tremple County Health Department is a recipient of a grant from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services in the amount of $78,400. Whereas the grant funds do not require any county matching funds, but need to be added to the 2022 budget. And whereas it is in the best interest of Tremple County to carry over funding to the 2023 budgets so that the objectives can be completed. Whereas these funds will be used for continuing education and training for the current health department staff, and for contracted services to provide a community health worker. Now be it resolved that $78,400 be added to the 2022 Public Health Non-Lapsing Revenue Account 101.43608, to be used for contract services and continuing education. Expense accounts 201.54120.210, $58,400, and 101.54120.323, $20,000. And I thought we had the resolution, the signed one.
Second.
Well, you know.
Motion.
Oh, maybe they're both put in the same. I found the other one. I got a little more to read. Introduced by Board of Health Committee, Bridget Turner, Heather Fritsch, Dr. William Backsa, Kevin Adams, Stacy Klein, Pam Nelson, Dr. Kim Breedenbach.
Seconded by Nutter, seconded by Mr. Foltz. Same thing, again, you want to ask the same question?
Well, maybe I rephrase it now. You have listed here a contracted services. So I would assume, number one, this is a one-time grant.
Yes.
And number two, you will expand, what do, expend, that's the word I want.
Sure.
You'll be expending that on a one-time contract, basically.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? There are none. Call the roll.
Andy, did you want to vote on the other resolution? That was for the Great River? Okay, now we'll change it to 17-0 on that one. Okay, Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasham.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
This time Heather's out, so. Kevin Adams.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
And I'll wait till she comes back to see if she wants to vote on that. Okay.
Executive Finance Committee, conversion from the Veterans Relief Fund account to a non-lapsing.
Whereas the Tremple County Veterans Service Office has an annual budget for veterans' relief. This account is a lapsing account, and whereas the use of this account varies respectively year over year, and unappropriate funds are returned to the county general fund each year with the renewal of county budgets. Whereas this account also serves as a way for the public, as well as service organizations, to submit donations for veterans' relief. Often, these donations have a specific intent, example, child welfare, which could cause the donation to sit dormant until the specific need arises. Whereas due to the lapsing nature of this account, the donated funds would be placed in the general fund at the end of each fiscal year, which is not the intent of the donor. And whereas this conversion would enable more donations to be accepted, as well as to potentially accrue a larger pool of funds to be used in times of need for veterans and their families. Now be it resolved that the Tremple County Board of Supervisors authorize account 101.54700 Veterans Relief be converted to a non-lapsing account with the intent of continuing the annual agreed-upon budget deposit, regardless of the account balance each fiscal year end. Introduced by Executive Finance Committee, Riley Foltz, John Austin, David Larson, David Orsh.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion by Mr. Larson, seconded by Mr. Orsh. Any discussion? Steve's not here to talk about it. It's basically self-explanatory, and it hopefully gets him some more donations that he.
Andy actually has some donations that he has been holding, which is not a good thing, to have checks in your desk. So this will help.
Okay. Call the roll.
John Austin.
Yes.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasham.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Heather Fritsch.
Yes.
Kevin Adams.
Absolutely.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
17 to 0. And Heather, do you want to vote on the Public Health Welfare Workforce one?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Audit Committee, members' claims.
Whereas the Audit Committee has audited the following claims and recommend that they be allowed as follows. John Austin, $799.76. Kevin Adams, $185.10. Robert Becker, $710.29. Riley Foltz, $171.06. Heather Fritsch, $279.56. Ron Johnson, $505.61. Stacy Klein, $312.32. David Larson, $362.32. Dick Miller, $181.59. Kellen Nelson, $592.74. Jean Nutter, $331.90. David Orsh, $109.36. Richard Sasham, $191.26. Dan Schreiner, $775.19. Lori Severson, $50. Andy Todd, $301.79. Bridget Turner, $224.88. Total per diems, $4,600. Total expenses, $1,484.73. Grand total, $6,084.73. Now be it resolved that the claims be allowed as shown. Introduced by Audit Committee, John Austin, Heather Fritsch, Kevin Adams.
Motion by Mr. Foltz.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner.
Did you say anything?
I said, well.
All I heard was, okay. Foltz, you said Foltz and Turner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll.
Robert Becker.
Yes.
Dan Schreiner.
Yes.
Kellen Nelson.
Yes.
David Larson.
Yes.
Jeanie Nutter.
Yes.
Ron Johnson.
Yes.
Bridget Turner.
Yes.
Stacy Klein.
Yes.
Richard Sasham.
Yes.
Lori Severson.
Yes.
Andy Todd.
Yes.
Dick Miller.
Yes.
David Orsh.
Yes.
John Austin.
Yeah.
Riley Foltz.
Yes.
17 to 0.
We're bypassing this next item to move it down to the end. Item nine, announcements. I'm supposed to nominate two individuals for appointment to the governor's, by the governor, he'll appoint one of the two to the Mississippi River Planning Commission. So far, I just have one candidate. I'm looking for approval. And this has to be a citizen member, so if you can think of another one, let me know. Right now, George Brandt has requested to be on it. And I'm looking for approval of George Brandt.
I make a motion to approve George Brandt as a representative of the Mississippi River Planning Commission.
Motion made by Ms. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Turner. Any other discussion?
And this is just a nomination, by the way, because the governor will appoint.
Yeah.
Buzz Sorgy might be a good second citizen member.
Who?
Buzz Sorgy.
Oh, you want to, you want to call him?
He's on our PTE committee. He's really, he must be right up his alley.
Okay.
We'll write that down, and we'll vote on that one at the same time, then. Make sure he does, he wants to do it.
If he doesn't, then I won't send it in.
Yeah.
So we aren't going to approve George tonight, you're going to wait?
Well, put Buzz on there, too.
Oh.
The governor will have.
Do you want me to go call him right now?
Well, you can call him later. He can always take his name off.
Yeah, I'll let, I can call him tonight and let you know.
Okay, I just like.
So you want to change your motion to the two names then?
I didn't make the motion.
Well, we had the motion for the well.
Yes, you did, for George.
Oh, my God.
And Bridget did the second.
It's been a long day. I have been working since 8 o'clock. So what, what do you need me to do? Revise my motion?
Your motion was to nominate George.
Okay.
But if you want to do both.
I'm amending my motion to nominate George and Buzz Sorgy.
Okay. Do you want?
Second.
Second that, yeah?
Okay, now, voice vote.
Yes.
In favor of George Brandt and Buzz Sorgy.
Right now, you're voting on the amendment, because you actually did a motion to amend.
S O R G E.
This was an amendment.
Well, that's how it was posed as, so.
Okay.
His name is spelled, his name is really Patrick, S O R G E.
Okay.
Worked for DNR for 40 years.
Motion on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
You got to wait for him.
Buzz is probably going to kill me, but.
Okay. Now on the motion to approve George Brandt and Buzz Sorgy.
Patrick. Would you be Patrick? That's his official name.
I'll put Patrick on there.
Yeah, sounds better.
Okay.
He's been Buzz all his life, so, okay.
Motion to approve the two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie. Now to change the appointment of Western Guerlain representative, it was myself, and I couldn't do it because it's on the Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month, so it doesn't fit. And I appointed Jeanie Nutter, who has been doing it in the meantime. So I'd like approval from this board to approve my appointment of Jeanie Nutter to serve on the Western Guerlain.
I'll move to approve Jeanie Nutter on the Western Guerlain.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, seconded, motion by Turner, seconded by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
That's why you got a new one of these on your desk.
Yeah. Okay. Appointment of the Solar Committee. This came from Glenn Ust McCorman. Recommended Solar Committee members per ELC committee is Kellen Nelson, who is a committee member, Riley Foltz, who is a committee member, Scott Hayes, who is a Rivlin Energy citizen, John Scow, a citizen member, Kirk Mulder, a citizen member, Randy Severson, a citizen member, and Tony Munson, a citizen member. Looking for approval, I'm motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Klein, Ms. Klein, Ms. Klein.
Mr. Chair, can you tell us what this committee is? I'm curious.
You want to explain it, Kellen?
Where did, oh, Mike's here.
Oh, Mike is here. Mike is here.
Right there.
Mike.
That's him.
He switched chairs on me.
This is a study committee to study solar farms and potential development of solar farms in the committee. There's been all kinds.
Zoning issues. This is, or potential zoning.
Everything related to the development, taxation, assessments, those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's just call for a roll, too, right? I mean, for a voice roll.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? There are none, it's Carrie. I would like a letter read. This is a press release about Reynolds Tomter from Pigeon Falls. He's the oldest living veteran, as far as I know.
That is pretty much what it is. 105-year-old Wisconsinite to receive Congressional Gold for his World War II Merchant Marine service on Monday, August 8th, at 1:00 p.m. Central Time at the Peace Lutheran Church of Pigeon Falls. And during World War II, the U.S. Merchant Marine delivered the necessary cargo to support Allied forces worldwide, helping to ultimately secure victory. This feat came with dire consequences as an estimated 1 in 26 who served in the USMM lost their lives in service to our country. An additional 11,200 mariners were injured during the conflict, and dozens were captured and tortured as POWs. Over 1,440 vessels were sunk, 733 over 1,000, no, 100 gross tons. The Merchant Marines were present at every invasion in World War II. They transported over 700,000 servicemen and women overseas. Despite this tremendous service, and although being promised by FDR, benefits equivalent to the GI Bill, our U.S. Merchant Marines were denied veteran status until 1988, only then after they won a lawsuit against our governor, government. More than three decades later, in March of 2020, the Merchant Marines of World War II Congressional Gold Medal Act was signed into law by the President of the United States. The official congressional ceremony finally took place on May 18th, 2022. Reynolds Tomter served in the World War II Merchant Marine and participated in the greatest sea lift, sea lift in the history of our nation. We owe our freedom to men like Reynolds, who selflessly served in the most dangerous arena of the war. On August 8th, the American Merchant Marine Veterans Organization, on behalf of a grateful nation, will present Mr. Tomter with his Congressional Gold Medal. During the ceremony, Mr. Tomter will also receive international recognition in being presented the Novoskoshian Norwegian Convoy Cup Award and the Norwegian Liberation Medal. Please consider joining us for this once-in-a-lifetime event as World War II veteran Reynolds Tomter receives his Congressional Gold Medal. Afterwards, cake and refreshments will be served.
What time is it? Can you say it again?
One o'clock.
What day?
August 8th.
Is that on a weekend or...